I'd like to call the Freeburg Community High School District 77 Board Meeting for March 15th, 2018 to order. Could you please call and roll?
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mrs. Stopp?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Madrell?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Gauk?
Here.
Quorum, please rise for the Political Legions. Political Legions.
To the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So have they intended changes this evening? There are not. At this time, we'll open it up to public comments. If anybody would like to say anything, there's a two-minute time limit. Anybody would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? Oh, we got one.
I'm here tonight, I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Mr. Thompson. I think it is shameful and embarrassing that the school board is allowing one student to potentially ruin a teacher's career per stating a fact rather than an opinion. He's a math teacher who teaches from his heart and goes above and beyond for every student he has. There's qualities so many that our teachers that could benefit from. Although I wasn't present in the classroom for the situation at hand, I know his integrity and intentions were never to hurt any other individual. Mr. Thompson has obviously made an impact in my life, not only as a student but as a person, and I wouldn't be here tonight if it weren't for the fact that he has made such a profound impact on my life, always pushing me to be better. There was one student who was offended by his statement, which was by the way a fact, not an opinion, and I'm asking the board to take into account the fact that there are so many more students who are offended that we could be losing one of the best teachers that Freeburg has ever had.
Thank you. Any more comments? Could you please thank your Dave?
Cool shot. I would like to say that Mr. Thompson is a great teacher. He has, you know, in the classroom as well as life advice he has given me. That's about it.
Do I have to say my name?
Please.
Okay. I'm Lily Rika, and I'm on the soccer team, and Mr. Thompson is the JV coach for us, and he's honestly a wonderful coach, and he makes soccer bearable. And I've had him in math classes for two years, and he's an awesome teacher, and he just has, he's obviously had an impact on all of our lives, or otherwise we wouldn't be here. Kind of taking what Molly said, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing more? We'll move on to the consent agenda. We need to approve. Has everyone had a chance to look over the consent agenda? We'll do, we'll do individual one. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote for this. We'll start with, I'm just, so roll that. The motion, sorry. So move. Now roll calls. Start the grade.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any committee reports this evening?
The personnel committee will be a post-session topic. We did have a strategic planning committee meeting on Saturday, the 10th. I'm not sure if Miller would like to talk about it, or if he'd like me to talk about it.
I thought the strategic planning meeting on Saturday went very well. There was a lot of communication, because the school board was there. There were, I didn't count, but approximately only 25 to 30 people. I thought we got a lot accomplished. There's still more to go, but I think it went really well, so I'm excited to see what goals comes out, what goals and opinions come out of that.
And so the next step is, Mr. Dirks, who is from the School Board Association who ran the meeting, he will write up his report. That report will basically become the minutes for that meeting, and then we'll take that report and then refine the different goals and present that to the board. Eventually as district goals for them to approve. Rest of the work to ours.
Any questions?
I would just add to what Angie said. I think, I think that was some time well spent, and it was really kind of a positive activity. Quite a few people were able to participate in faculty staff appearance as well as the board. I appreciate.
Okay, move on to the student members' report.
Okay, tomorrow, Mr. Midget is at 7:00, and all proceeds will go to benefit Cathy Cromartie. Student Council's hosting that. Bandel march and the St. Patty's Day parade on Saturday. I hope you're interested in going. The walkout on Wednesday, I think, was kind of a really good experience, and I think a lot of the students really, the students participated, really appreciated being given a chance to kind of be aware of and kind of exercise their political, privileged responsibilities. Obviously, school safety's kind of been a topic a lot lately, and I think we kind of need to, I think people are feeling very kind of unprepared in the face of this issue, and I think it kind of needs to be addressed. Like, there's not necessarily, at least it doesn't seem like a solid standardized kind of set of information that everyone knows. Like, I've heard from one teacher that if we leave the building, they're never supposed to be up somewhere, but I've only just heard that, you know, in my eighth semester here. And I think a lot of people maybe aren't really aware of these things, and I think we kind of just need to standardize that, maybe break out a little bit of the drill mentality, or what are we allowed to do if this situation should arise? And also, I think that, just kind of in terms of the frequency of the events that happen that kind of prompt this awareness, I think we really kind of may need to impress a little bit how serious these events are. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? It will move on to the principals' report.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to do a couple of staff introductions. So we have tonight, Mr. Patrick Agavoli, who teaches in our resource department, social studies department, and is an assistant basketball coach. And then Mr. Matt Lawler, who is in our, teaches in our driver's education department, our athletic director and head boys' basketball coach. Okay, lots of news tonight. We're gonna start with some ag stuff. Congratulations to Taylor Miller, Matthew Grab, Nathan Irwin, and Jesse Hodrick for their performances at the Public Speaking CDE competition that was held at Marissa High School. Taylor Miller placed first in the prepared speech category at the varsity level, and Jesse Hodrick placed first at the JV level. And that's a six to eight minute speech with questioning that they get to prepare ahead of time. Matthew Grab placed first in creed, where they recite the FFA creed, then answer questions, and this is a freshman-only division. Nathan Irwin placed seventh at the varsity level in extra, extra, I'm gonna say that wrong, extra, extra perennials category, where they draw a topic out of a hat and then have 30 minutes to prepare a four to six minute speech followed by questioning. Taylor, Jesse, and Matthew will all travel to the District Five competition April 25th in Cartagena. Also, they had a district proficiency at Agro-Science Fair, and here are the results. Taylor Miller placed first place in veterinarian science. Nathan Irwin, first place in fruit production placement. Mackenzie Goddard, second place in ag sales entrepreneurship. Griffin Range, first place overall at the Agro-Science Fair. Matthew Grab, first place in environmental resources and seventh overall. Taylor Miller and Nathan Irwin will be advancing to the state level proficiency grading competition at U of I on March 24th. And then, as you came in, there's a big Monsanto announcement over there. This is the America Farmers Grow Communities Award. This congratulation actually goes out to Diane Schaefer, our Director of Business, on being selected as this year's recipient. America Farmers Grow Communities is sponsored by the Monsanto Fund and gives farmers the chance to win $2,500 donation for their favorite community nonprofit organization. Diane is donating her $2,500 winnings to the Freeburg FFA. Marissa Modula, the FFA sponsor, will be organizing the press release and completing the donation requirements through the FFA. Congratulations and a big thank you to Diane. She's been trying to get this grant for the last 10 years. So it's local farmers, they apply for the grant, and then they have to donate it, so that's really awesome for our FFA. The Wise Team competed at McKendry on Thursday and finished third overall as a team. You had to finish first or second in order to go to the next level of state. However, we did have some individuals that will be going on state. Brett Harris and Ethan Alexander will both be advancing to the state competition at U of I on April 19th. Brett placed first in both biology and English. Ethan placed second in both computer science and engineering graphics. Ben DeHaas finished third overall in math, did a really great job, but again, they only take first and second, so congratulations. We also had the Pharmacy for Me Challenge going on since January. This was a free educational program that was offered by SIUE in which 14 students participated from Freeburg High School, SIUE. They came here with their pharmacy, I think it was the head of the department, and a graduate student. They educated these students about the field of pharmacy, also helped them prepare presentations on e-cigarettes and vapor pens. And the students went to Freeburg Grade School. On March 9th, they gave those presentations at the school, and I heard they did just a fantastic job. Our students that participated were Hayden Ott, Reagan Gazinski, Holly Wagner, Mackenzie Whittle, Lindsay Whittle, Colleen Cockrell, Catherine Marler, Bailey Meyer, Kelsey Burrows, Morgan Kirky, Isabel Immer, Eileen Lushy, Claire Walker, Mackenzie Goddard. Congratulations to the FCHS drafting team led by Mr. Doug Haas. They competed on Friday, March 9th at SWIC and placed first in every category. Intro to CAD, Josh Reader earned a first, and Logan Stone earned a second. Mechanical CAD, first place went to George McDonald, and second went to Nathan Irwin. Arch CAD, first went to Colton Pierce. 3D modeling, first went to Justin Providence. 3D assembly, first went to Ethan Alexander. Pretty impressive, so congratulations to the drafting team. Next Wednesday is the incoming freshman orientation at 7 o'clock PM. Students and parents will have the opportunity to meet the staff, tour the high school, and receive information at the extracurricular fair and cafeteria. Jeff Alt, Lori Crunk, and I are putting together a short presentation on the responsibilities of cellphone use, Chromebook use, and we'll also be talking about vapor pens to the incoming parents, just to give them a heads up. We also have some resources provided for the parents that gives them information about various cellphone apps and how to better help with their students' responsibility in using those things. Indoor trap. They had their first meet at Illinois College, where the boys finished second and the girls finished third. They had a second indoor meet at Principia. We have two new school records at that meet. Stephanie Jacobs went 11-7 in the pole vault, and Charlie Parrish went 9-31-24. That was in the two. Is that two?
Two.
Yeah. The next meet they have coming up is at U of I, and then they'll be moving outside. We also have soccer going on, girls' soccer tournament. They had their first game and went 2-2. We had boys' baseball play their first game and won 2-1, was that Tuesday, and then they lost last night 0-1. So spring sports are definitely, definitely rolling here. Spring break, oh wait. First of all, thank you to the Illinois National Guard and Private First Class Houck, who was in the back of the room, for providing an obstacle course today and two giant human foosball courses for the seniors for their award for their fundraiser that they did, the pin wars. They came and set it up today, the kids got to play in them, they were really cool. Couple injuries, right? But for the most part, they had a great time. They watched NCAA basketball. It was a really, just a good kind of last time for the seniors to really be together before graduation, so thank you to everybody who participated in that. Spring break is March 26th to April 2nd. When we return, the school year will go quickly with spring sports, the play, spring music concert, prom, post-prom, final exams, SAT testing, so we're gonna move quickly. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I think it's great all the academic success that we're showing, and I aspire to put an article in the papers because I didn't know, but I'd sure love for you to make sure you put some of those things in your next report that you put out, just so the community can see that too. Because we did have a comment during the planning that, let's not make it all about sports, let's let everybody know about what the good things that these other kids are doing too academically and how good the school's doing.
They're doing great. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, Mrs. Minor and I met last week with a couple of representatives from SWIC. They wanted to come in and talk about the dual credit opportunities that SWIC has. Currently, Freeburg offers three dual credit courses, two in welding, one in manufacturing. There is a fourth that Mr. Nipper is gonna be teaching, a business and technology concepts course, which is basically almost 100% approved by SWIC. It'll be another dual credit course here at the high school that they can get SWIC credit. That'll start next year. The other course that they talked to us about is something we talked about last year and never got it completed, is our applied math course. This is a course that basically seniors take to get a fourth year of math in high school. We can make some adjustments to that curriculum and turn it into, Mr. John got me out with the
The Accuplacer.
The program.
The SWIC Accuplacer.
There's a program SWIC has. Basically, it's, I don't remember either, so. But students that take this course and get a qualifying grade can then not have to take, they won't have to take the Accuplacer test. They would automatically be put into college algebra, which is the first credited course at SWIC. So they don't have to take the Accuplacer, so there's no risk of having to take a non-credited course, which is you would pay for the course, but you don't get college credit for it. So that is something that Mrs. Minor's trying to work with the folks at SWIC and get that in place for next year, so it would just be a matter of adjusting the curriculum a little bit, and we would qualify for that, and so our students would be able to take advantage of that.
Bridge the gap.
Bridge the gap, thank you. I would have gotten it in the next 14 K dollars.
Any questions or comments on that? Let's move to the next one.
Had our full compliance visit. I think this happens every three years. Susan Sarfati of the regional office came by. There's a lot of paperwork that hasn't been put together. I want to thank Jane Maith to my left, who does most of the legwork on that, putting that, those documents together and uploading to their file. There were a couple small issues that they found. A few of those were just some signatures, papers that didn't have signatures in the right places. Actually, one of them, you had to sign it twice, so we got them signed twice. The last is a policy that we have to pass. Last year, the Illinois State Legislature, legislature passed a bill that gave schools permission to require students to turn over their passwords for their social media. And everybody in the back right now is just freaking out. So then, later in the year, they passed a bill saying schools are not allowed to require kids or ask kids for their social media passwords. So since that happened, our policy now has to reflect, that says that the administration can't ask students for their social media passwords. We've never asked students for the social media password, so now we have to pass a policy that says that. So that was one of the things that they found that we didn't have, so we'll be doing that later in the meeting.
Any questions or comments on that item?
Legislative update. Springfield, we are still looking at April for the ISBE to start distributing the money from the new evidence-based forming, funding model. Again, remember, that is the reason why our reorganization study is probably gonna be delayed to either May or June, because we have to wait for that information to get in, for those, that group to look at that. So we'll be looking forward to seeing what that's gonna work out to be. And then, a new bill that was introduced has to do with school safety. Set Bill 2611 is a proposed bill that would permit schools to install push-button locks on the interior classroom doors. The way the bill reads is, it can be done on a temporary basis. I'm not sure exactly what temporary basis means. But it would allow you to be able to push the door, push a little button, lock the door from the inside, eliminate the need to go out and around and lock the door, which we have to do right now. I have more on that, school safety, but that is one of the bills.
You got a quick second? This is board related, this word. Any questions or comments on that item?
And then, last but not least, you have the program in your files for the Southwest Division meeting. Again, if you are planning to attend that meeting on March 28th, if you could, let Jane know. And again, we will provide, I may need some help driving, but we will provide transportation to that event, which are always usually pretty good events put on by the School Board Association.
Questions or comments on that one? Let's move on to old business.
First is a reorganization feasibility study update. I don't really have anything new. I, again, we're waiting for the state to come through with their financial numbers, but we're still anticipating a May or June report from that group.
Okay, questions on this one?
We got some grant money for that study, right?
Yeah.
This doesn't impact that we had to hit it by a certain timeline, and then it's just over?
No.
So we'll, we'll still be able to file for that money, and if there's money available, it will be a nine-year reimbursed grant.
Good question. Good morning, B.
OPA, the kitchen management update. I kind of threw some numbers out there. A couple documents are in your packet. The first is what OPA presented last year as our estimate. It has in there that they anticipated that we were gonna lose $33,000. We have been historically losing $40,000, $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 a year. In the kitchen, it's gotten better, but we've had some large losses. The second document is the projection they have from the increased lunches that we've had this year, and they anticipate that we're only gonna lose $3,400. So that is a very nice positive turn. And then the last document is a spreadsheet that shows the monthly increases in lunches over last year. It's a substantial increase in the amount of lunches that were sold. When they gave us the presentation last year, they said for every 5% increase, we could expect about a $9,000 turnaround in money. We are averaging about 18% increase per month on our lunches, and that, that kind of works out pretty close to about the $20,000 difference in those prices. There were issues. There has been some issues with OPA. Some of it was personnel, some of it was just the transition from the old system to the new system. I think a lot of things have gotten better. I would, I would like to take another year to see if it works. I think we're going in the right direction. I think once they can come in and completely implement, I think it'll be a very positive thing. So I'm actually asking the board, you know, not a motion that needs to be made, but just to kind of, as long as everybody's okay, I will start on the paperwork. It's still debatable whether I have to actually bid this out like we did last year, or it could be a simpler process, but I'll get a hold of the state board and find out what the steps are. So I would like to do the paperwork to have them come back in for another year.
Any questions or comments on this? I think with all new programs, it takes a little bit of time, so I think this first year is promising, if we go ahead and continue to give them a second year. Let's go ahead and further favor that.
You're addressing the issues that do come up, particularly with third line.
We have been, and it's, it's been much better. They have a new director that took over probably in December, and it's taken a little bit, but it's, it's started to improve. So they started working with the breakfast. The breakfast hasn't taken off like we hoped. But there are some other things that OPA can bring in, that they've brought in other schools, and so that's what we're hoping to get, is to get the lunches settled down and kind of get in the groove, and then start to bring in some of these other options, which I think the kids will rely on.
The breakfast, is there a, is there a timeline or something? At what point do you, you say, okay, this isn't going to work, or here, this is, our team is, are improving?
There isn't, but the breakfast is 100% reimbursable. So, so having the breakfast, it's not, it's not a money-losing
Thanks.
So.
Let's move on to AC.
All right, we are at the point now where we need to talk about approving the boiler HVAC bid. We had five companies bid the project. The low bid came in from Lancaster Sheet Metal. When this type of process is put together, we have architects and engineering firms, consultants that come in. They go through the project. I brought this little manual, and for all the kids out there, I've read this twice to make sure everything was okay, maybe. And, but they go through, they bid everything out, they do all the paperwork, they vet the company, they make sure the company can do the work, they make sure all the specs in here meet what the company is bidding. I have invited Mike Staub, who is from FGM, our architect, and Tyson Dunham, who is from Brick Consulting Company. They are the two people that we work with. If any board members had any questions, but I do think we're at a point where we need to approve this. Otherwise, we're probably gonna have to wait again another year, because by the time we order the equipment, it won't be in in time to do it for some of us. But if board members had questions, I've, they've given up their time, and if you have anything, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer.
So as far as the setup that we talked about originally, so this is gonna be dual units?
Yes.
Correct? A little roof?
Yes.
Duct work merges together somewhere? Are we gonna be able to run one unit at a time?
It is, it is separate. It is two units, two separate units.
So how does that allow us to get by with one?
Well, in, it will throw both ways when there's lesser, when there's less load conditions, assuming you don't need as much. There won't be as much load in there, and there is enough load, both units will be on. Or they can be, we can sequence them, for both of them to run at lesser times.
Now, that's one of the other questions. We did get the ethernet connection, so they
This tying into a honeyball system.
And they have programmable
Yes, yes, fully programmable, cooling, heating, dehumidification, ventilation.
This company has the capability to make changes in that software, can you?
Yes, they have, they have subbed out CPS Group, who is, who currently does the programming in the honeyball, the building automation system, so.
So when we get to the duct work part, just for clarity, so if they're, if they're not interconnected in any way, we don't have any dampers, then we have some remote locations, are they still gonna be able to be fed if we're only running one unit?
It's all a single, it's all a single space and
Is it a single plan or is it?
There are two runs of duct over each side of the gym floor, so they're on the very outskirts side, so they're more towards the middle. So you'd have options of running both. If you tie the duct work in together, you're gonna have more duct work running across, you're gonna have more controls, dampers opening and closing, more, really more issues that can be both of them on, pushing through there. This is a very difficult setup for every, about every single gym we've done. We've done gyms with this contractor before.
So with our application, though, if we only run, so let's call one north and one south, for better or better number, covering the numbers we have on location. But one's north, one's south, so if we run the south unit, are we still gonna be able to supply the rooms that are off the north side?
Well, it's all, it's all just the gymnasium that's being supplied. We have
The rest of it's electric heat?
Well, that's because it's heat only.
And those other rooms?
It's, it, right now, it's steam heat, steam heater, so we're going back with electric, just because we're getting rid of the steam boiler.
So we're gonna stay with the windows?
Right.
We have window The only window unit would be in the AD's office. The locker rooms are not air-conditioned, they're just heated.
Correct. They're all, there are exhaust fans in locker rooms that draw air from the gym
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
The only question I have was that there's only one company that isn't obviously a plumbing company, at least by name, and that's the one that came in with the lowest bid. You said that you've, you've worked with And that's the one that came in with the lowest bid. And you, you said that you've, you've worked with this sheet metal company?
Langhouser Sheet Metal, yeah, they're out of Highland. They, we did Highland High School Gymnasium with them. Five years or so ago, they did that gymnasium, very similar project. And we have other projects with them currently down at other schools.
And, uh, you know, I'm sorry, do you know how many subs they're gonna need to do?
Well, they have a sub for the electrical, um, for the controls, um, for roofing, there's some roofing work around the units, some masonry work, we have new openings.
I thought that might get it done as this question.
And there are, and, and the gas piping.
That's what they do. They, they find experts in them.
Correct. And they do have reputable, I asked them their subs and they're all the people we've worked with.
Okay, I, I'd like to make the motion to move to accept the low bid, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars from Langhouser Sheet Metal for the H V A C project. Second, say if I might, would you roll call sort of Vicki?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to N D.
Uh, the asbestos payment update. Uh, we have signed the contracts. Uh, we have not had a pre-construction meeting, but that's next on the list. And so I'll be working with Jeff from Environmental Consultants on that. And so, uh, the idea is to have that work done as, as soon as school is over. And, uh, that way we can get the, this other project that we've just approved, um, to go.
Any questions on this? Okay, moving on.
Uh, the intercom paging bell clock and phone system. Uh, Jeff and I actually met with the C T S, uh, gentleman yesterday to do our pre-install meeting. So Jeff is providing, um, all of the, um, uh, all the extensions and all that paperwork that he needs to program their system. Uh, they will be in over spring break to put in the phones. Uh, and then they will work, um, hopefully the second or third week in April. They'll do it in the evening where they'll have to pull the wire for the new clocks and, and the new speakers. One of the things that, uh, is a nice feature that they'll have, um, on the phones, there'll be basically a speed dial number that, uh, any classroom can press a button, it'll ring. We can tell what phones we want it to ring on. We're gonna have all the office phones. That way, if there's something going on, they can call, and it'll ring in several different phones, and that way they can get help or, uh, get word out for anything, uh, over the phone. So that was one of the things the teachers had asked, is there gonna be a panic button? Um, and this is probably the closest thing to a panic button that'll be ringing. And so that was a nice feature.
Questions or comments on this?
One question I had, last time you and I talked about that, did you talk to them all about software having the availability that they could be saved? This hallway, if we need to, so that, if we had an event, we could alert certain areas, or have you had that conversation?
Have not had that conversation, yep.
So these clocks are going away?
Yeah.
And the phone system is going away? What are we doing with those whenever they go?
The phones, I'm assuming the company will take and do it in recycling. Would you like a clock?
No, but I'm thinking there is, there's an auction place about what it does online. They, they dump things from eleven in high school, they dump things from sixteen.
Sure, we can, if they're worth something-
There's a hundred of them and-
If there were something, then I'd be more happy to make some money off of it.
Might not be much, but rather just throw them in the dumpster.
I thought you had-
No, I don't need it. I don't need a clock.
Okay. Next item.
Um, we put out the, uh, a new seventy-one passenger bus for bid. Uh, we, we received two bids. Uh, Midwest Transit and Central States Bus Sales. Central States, uh, was the low bid at seventy-nine thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars. Uh, this is a gas-powered bus. Um, the seventy-one passenger is, uh, the size that the transportation director, um, Fritz Holcomb and Bob Burns, the mechanic, would like to get. Uh, this bus will actually replace two buses, so we had an extra bus. So we will then take those buses and more than likely, probably put them on eBay. Uh, Freeburg Grade School has done that a couple of different times, and so, uh, we could possibly make forty, ten thousand dollars on the sale of those two buses. So, um, I think, uh, the bus that was the low bid has everything that we wanted in a bus, and I think, uh, I would absolutely recommend that we purchase that bus.
I think the one thing you didn't mention though is the Central States, that's, yeah, Central States, which is the low bid, about our mechanic can do the warranty work.
Oh, that is-
That's important.
Yeah, so one of the things that Central States is a bluebird bus, our mechanic is certified for, uh, doing, uh, warranty work, I don't know what's going on, warranty work for, uh, bluebird buses. So he's able to do any kind of warranty work, and then what they'll do is they'll give us, reimburse us his labor. So at a hundred and some odd dollars an hour, we would get reimbursed as opposed to taking our bus someplace else and have somebody else do, uh, that work.
Any questions or comments on this one? We need a motion? I'll make the motion. We, uh, accept the Central States bus bid and purchase the bus. Mr. McRae, Mr. Jung, you roll call, start with, uh, Sterling?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item.
Uh, this is, uh, the second reading of District Board Policy Amendment seven point one zero zero. This pos, uh, policy essentially changes the date from Au, uh, October fifteenth to August first for students to have the required, um, health documentation, uh, that's required by the state of Illinois to, uh, be able to attend school. Previously, they had, uh, at, at, uh, October fifteenth, if they didn't have the documentation, we'd have to call the parents and tell the parents they could no longer come after that date. So if we move it to August first, then those students would not be able to register. We feel like that's gonna be a lot better for the office. It's gonna put a little more pressure on those parents that are not getting the documentation that they need. Um, and this is, we've given plenty of time, plenty of notice, uh, to parents. So this is what we are recommending is that we change that date from October fifteenth to August first in that policy.
Any questions or comments? We need a motion?
I would need to approve the second reading and approval of District Policy seven point one hundred, as presented.
Mr. McRae?
Second.
Second, Mr. Staub, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, move on to new business.
Um, I put this item in here in case there was something that came out of the, um, meeting on Saturday that the board needed to take any action on. I don't think there's any action the board needs to take. We're still waiting for, uh, the report from, uh, Mr. Dirks. And so therefore, there really, really isn't any, um, motion or, or action we can take here.
Questions on this or comments? Next item.
Um, the physical education department has come to the administration. Uh, this has been in discussion for a while. They are interested in incorporating, uh, uniforms for P E. Uh, there's, uh, pictures of the uniforms, so it would be a shirt. It would say something like Freeburg Physical Education. There would be numbers on it, and, uh, they could write the numbers in. Uh, and then a pair of shorts. So the reasons they're giving, uh, they believe that, um, this is gonna improve dress code issues that they have. Uh, it'll protect students' clothes that they wear now during P E. Uh, it'll be consistent in the no-dress issues that we have. And it also eliminates what they believe are hygiene issues with students wearing the same clothes to P E as they do during the school day. And that way they change out of those clothes. Uh, this is pretty common for schools. It's, it's almost, every school has, has probably had them in grade school. Uh, the uniforms would run about fifteen dollars. They could use them, um, all four years. Um, they can buy extra, which I guarantee you, we're probably buying an extra set uh, for my guy. And so this is something that they have looked into and, and feel like they have all the policies and all the procedures worked out. And we would like to implement that for, um, the eighteen, nineteen school year.
Any questions or comments on this?
Family, is there, um, something in place for families to do for, if you know, still?
Yes.
Well, that's right, there's a rental policy.
Well, the rental, the rental is more for students that don't bring their uniform. It's, it's, it's not a rental policy per se where you could rent this instead of purchasing. So, so for students or families that can't before, we absolutely would help them out. For, uh, students that don't show up, that is one of the, uh, uh, rules that you would have to, uh, after a certain number of times, you'd have to rent it. They're gonna charge you for it. So there is a little bit of extra built into the cost, and so that, that extra will cover all the extra uniforms that they will buy for this rental and, and, uh, when they need extra uniforms, they don't have to purchase one or two at a time.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I had to ask Vicki 'cause I was, I swore we had uniforms, blue shorts and a white T-shirt and a white shirt, correct? So I was surprised. I didn't know when they went away from that or what.
I, I do not remember.
Did they have them here?
No, they didn't.
See, I don't think they had them since I was here.
I wonder why they went away from it. I don't know. So, I'm in favor of it.
Uh, we need a motion?
Somebody wants to be the bad guy? I'll be the mo, I'll do the making of motion. I move to approve requiring physical education students to wear uniforms in P E as presented.
I had to wear them.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Or no opposition yet? Motion passes. Save, next item, school safety.
Um, put this in to, um, get the opportunity to talk about, uh, an issue that obviously is, is very big in the news today. Um, wanted to kinda give a little bit of an update. Uh, we did do a lockdown drill. Um, we do a lockdown drill each year. Um, probably before I go too far, trying to remember what Brett said. Um, I, I'll talk about your part in a second, but we absolutely need to have a more solidified plan and a better plan so everybody understands. Um, unfortunately, sometimes we, we don't do these things and until something like this smacks us in the face. And, uh, so, um, yes, we do need to get better at that. So the drill, our drill actually went very well. We had the Freeburg Police here. Um, we went around, we checked every door. Um, to a door, they were all locked. Students were, um, away from the door. Um, I thought it was very quiet. Uh, so that drill went very well. So, that being said, we had a meeting with the, um, teachers the night before and, and talked a little bit about, um, the drill coming up and some of their concerns. So I wanted to kind of address those and kind of engage the board in a conversation. So the first thing, um, so there, there is a, kind of a debate going on about, um, some devices. You see some devices. There's a kid in Wisconsin that made these things that schools were buying that you could put on the door and, and use it to close the door and keep the door shut. Um, what we have been told by the regional office, office and our architect is that is a health, life, safety violation to have those in the room. Reason being is that a student could use that to trap another student in the room and do that student harm. Um, I'm not interested in debating whether or not that's a valid argument or not, because in this time of emotion, it's tough. And I actually told the, the regional superintendent that that is not a conversation I really wanna get into with a parent on whether or not, you know, would I rather us break the law or rather us save your child from getting shot? So, uh, I have a, uh, an idea over that, uh, to take care of that. Uh, our locks on our doors are, some of them are, are original to the building, so they're probably thirty, forty years old. The locks in the south end, which is the newest section, is twenty years old. Uh, we have issues with our locks. Some of them do, do not lock all the time. Uh, some of them are, are loose. Uh, I like to refer to them as kind of contractor-grade locks. They're, they're just not, uh, real, real good locks. Uh, the other issue that came up with, uh, in the meeting with the teachers is the teachers are supposed to, if they hear the, the, uh, code red, they're supposed to go out in the hall, grab any kid, and then lock the door. Right now, our doors are only locked from the outside. So that means they have to reach around from the outside, lock the door. And there was a person or two killed in Florida that were doing exactly that. So the idea would be to have locks, a door that locks from the inside. Um, we don't have those. Um, so one of the things I've done is I've, I've looked at that. Uh, the last thing was, I'm kinda going through my bullets here. The last thing was just the, what Brett said. Our, our drills, um, we just have not done the drills enough. They, they, we haven't done drills, um, during passing periods when there would be great confusion. We haven't done drills at lunch, again, where there'd be great confusion. So these are all things that were brought up. It was, it was kind of an eye-opening, a humbling conversation with the teachers. Uh, but it was a good conversation because it, it, it brings up, um, you know, kind of forces you to start to think and, and do some things. So I think, um, the first thing that I'm interested in is looking at our locks. Um, one of the other, the things that the teachers talked about was the fact that there are probably eight or ten different master keys that flow around the building. So there's a master key that works, I mean, and that's my key ring. So that's got, I don't know how many different master keys on it. It would take me five minutes to go through and to lock a door. So the idea is to have one master key for all classrooms. So the teacher carries one key around, doesn't matter where they're at. If they sub for a teacher in the north end and they're a south end teacher, they would still have a key to the door. They could, you know, if there was a code red, they could lock that down. So in order to do that, you'd either have to rekey all doors or put new door locks in. Uh, so one of the things I looked into was door locks. So this was a company that brought, we can pass this around, but they brought in, it looks just like the door locks. The one thing this has, that it's keyed on both sides, and I'm not saying we have to buy this one, but this is keyed on both sides. But then on this side, there's a little button here, and this, this door is locked, so the teacher all they have to do is press the button at the red light lights. That means it's locked from the outside. This runs about two hundred dollars, is what the guy told me. Uh, we've got prices from anywhere from two to four hundred dollars, uh, per door. Um, we have about seventy-five doors. So, you know, we're looking at a pretty big chunk of change. In addition to our classroom doors, the doors on the east side of the building are, are not in great shape. There's some doors that don't latch completely. There's some doors that's easy to get into. Those doors need to be looked at to see whether or not they need to be replaced. And those are probably gonna run, I'm estimating at least a thousand dollars a door. So what I would like to do is I would like to, um, this all would qualify for health, life, safety. So I would like to, um, talk with Mike Staub, have him come out. We can sit down and talk about what we're looking at. Uh, and as you know, we have to apply for the health, life, safety grant. That's gonna take a little bit. Um, but we can do that. We can get the locks paid for through that money, the doors paid for through that money. And then we can at least upgrade the locks and the exterior doors, um, to help with that. The second is training. So Ms. Jung, Ms. Crunk and I, we've already discussed, uh, additional training. So we're planning on, before the school year's up, to do, um, a drill during passing period. So just everybody can kinda see the chaos and, and, uh, what they would have to do to get the students in the classroom. And then the next thing would be to do one during lunch period. Probably do that like a third hour or a fifth hour where there's not lunch trays. Just to kinda talk about, walk the kids through it. Um, one of the things that was actually Brett brought up, and I've had contact with parents, is what if their kid's at lunch and they run outside, are they gonna get in trouble? So, obviously they would not get in trouble, and there, there are places we're supposed to go. There's more than what you mentioned. But those are things that we need to communicate better to the staff and to the, uh, the students. So we do need extra training. Uh, lastly, Ms. Jung, uh, has been working with, uh, Joe Beliveau from the L M State Police. He's running a program on the thirteenth of April. We've got a team of about eight going, and the training, um, kinda gives us, um, help on identifying, um, people that may have some mental issues and, and what to look for and how to possibly identify people that are in, uh, stress to help them out, uh, moving forward. So we do have some things put in place, but, um, you know, some of this will take time. Right now, what I'm looking for is, is, uh, to start work with the architect to get some numbers, if that's what we wanna do. Be more than happy to hear any kind of discussions or comments or-
No, this is locking from the inside. How does that pass health, life and safety codes? If a push button would, what's the difference?
The, the, the button, all that button does is, uh, show you that it's locked.
Oh, it shows that it's locked?
Yeah, it doesn't lock. It just shows you that it's locked. The idea is that there's a lock on the inside, so the teacher would just have to open the door. They would, they could be shielded by the door for one side and just lock it from the inside. The other, the other thing that-
Lock it with a key?
Yes. Yeah, and that's the thing. We, you're, you're not allowed to have dead bolts. You can't have anything that a student has access to that they could lock the door and lock another student's eyes. So it has to be keyed.
So with the key, they can lock it on either side?
Correct.
Okay.
And if, from the inside, they can, um, they can walk out by just turning the door?
Yes, that code says you have to be able to just to hit that little lever and walk out. Yes, absolutely.
Mike, you have a question?
I, I think we should move forward. I don't think we should slow down. I think we need to move forward. I think we need to look, with, uh, with brick on, get the doors replaced that need replaced, that are not working properly. And, uh, you're, you're right, it takes some events sometimes to drive us a little bit. Stuff we've talked about, but we haven't gotten to yet. And I think we need to move forward so that the doors that we do will be ready for that shit. We don't have any, we're running up here. We don't make it, we're running out of time.
On the training aspect, I think it was after Columbine, I saw a thing on school safety, and I'm not sure how they're addressing it in the schools now, but they took trash bags and put them at each kid's seat, and they said, if a shooter comes in, he's going to be there for maybe five seconds. And they had them come in with like an airsoft gun, and the normal training was everybody huddled in the corner, and in five seconds, they shot eighteen of the twenty bags, or eighteen of them had a pellet in them. Then they put them in each individual seat, and they only hit five or six. And then the other thing on the training was, somebody comes through that door, you throw whatever you have at it. So, I mean, if you've got your Chromebook, you're throwing it, because that's going to distract. And just like most, just like a bully, you stand up to it. Not saying I want you to go and attack these, you know, or to confront them, but if they come through that door, I think that was something that was really interesting on that exposé that I saw. Again, I'm sure that Mr. Switzer Hopper and there's other areas that they talk about the training, but those were really interesting to me, because they're going to go to the path of police resistance. They open this door, it's, so it's coming at them, sorry. They're going to go to the next room, where the people all huddled in the corner, okay, this shouldn't finish in a barrel, so...
We've had, we've had teachers that were in other districts that had training, that have some resources. Our nurse's husband is a Clint County Sheriff's Deputy, and so he has resources. So, we have some names of some people, and we actually have some grant money we can use to help cover some of that cost. So, that's the other thing we want to do, is we want to bring in experts, because we're not experts on safety, and so we want to bring in some people to kind of talk about our particular facility, which is vulnerable, and how best to handle it. So, some of the other things that, you know, I've had some parents contact me, said that we just need to put bulletproof glass in all the exterior windows, through the offices, and so, you know, it's tough to talk about money when you're talking about safety. I haven't looked into bolt for class, but I'm sure it's expensive if you walk around our building. We've got lots of glass. And so, everything that I've heard, and again, this is not a definitive list, is that your best bet is to be behind a blocked door. But exactly what you said, if they come by, a student shooter comes by and they hits that, hit that door, and it's locked, they're going to go to the next room. And, and things like where you're going to have large crowds. So, that is where we have to really concentrate on is passing periods, activity period before upper school, where there's a large group, so if something does happen, kids and teachers and staff and all of them.
Greg, you've been real successful with the bidding process through the HAC, the bus, the locks, the PA. Would this also be a type of thing that would go on for bidding, at least the installation?
Yes, so, we're required to bid anything over twenty-five thousand, depending on what all was included in that, could be over that threshold, but there's nothing to say that we can't bid, even if it's under twenty-five. But I absolutely would, whether we bid it, we just really look at the different options of what they cost and get the best, I'm not even going to use that expression, get the best product for the money.
We don't think Dan's going to...
I do.
Okay.
If, and I asked the gentleman that came, I said, is this something we need a professional to install, or can we have our maintenance guy? He said, you absolutely could, the only issue is, you know, we've got, and he has some helpers, but how long will it take? And is it worth the time and worth the money just to have a team come in and install these? So, that's something we have to do.
I think this is a good first step, so I think we should go ahead and direct you to start looking into it. Anybody oppose that?
Another question I had is, how many options have we got? Here's one option, are there five, are there ten, in terms of products and cost?
I've seen at least three or four, like, that are unique. You can get as high-tech as having a electronic door, we have a key card. And those are some of the other things we're talking about is going back to the key cards. We've got a six-digit code on our doors, and I'm sure no students have a six-digit code. Now, they quit paying attention to me after they got earphones. But we've had, you know, we've had those codes get out. So, if you have a physical card, that restricts the number of people that can get in and out. And then that also gives them, if we have it on a lanyard, they can keep that master key on the lanyard, so it's always on the person, no matter where it goes. So, but there are options, I have not, I don't have a list of what they are.
And lastly, you had mentioned, and I don't, I'm trying to remember the agenda. Was this the time period that you wanted to discuss?
We can, yeah, we can.
Okay. Well, I'd like to know your views on, on the protest. I know legally, the Supreme Court, it's their right, the students absolutely have First Amendment right to, to protest an issue. That protest, though, doesn't necessarily go without penalty. And our decision to, to allow that during school is what I, I kind of have a problem with. It was seventeen minutes out of the school day. There's lots of issues out there. And for the administration to be making a call, yes or no, or now, we said yes to one, we can't say no to another, and it to fall during the school day, I think it should be a policy issue. That somewhere along the line, we can set time before school, we can set time after school, but to actually take time away from the school day, I don't know if we have to do that. We cannot stop them from protesting during the school day. As I said, there could be penalties for that, and that is legal. You leave the school, you can't come back. You leave the school, I mean, it could be something, you're up for Mr. Mitchell now, you have an unexcused absence, and you're no longer eligible for that. Whatever, whatever we would decide as a policy, I think needs to be in place versus it falling on Greg to make a decision and then bear the brunt of the emails for or against whatever issue happens to come up. So, that, that was my, my comment. I received some emails, we got a couple on, at least I did, on the, on the Google mail, for and against, so, I don't know what everybody else's thoughts are on that. They can protest, but it doesn't have to be without penalty if they decide to do it during the school day.
I don't know if I agree with creating a policy, but I think the way it was given was actually very well. I think it gave the parents an option because of saying, no, I don't want my child participating, but it also gave the kids something, this is something that affects them deeply, I mean, this is school shootings. I think they have every right in the world, daring school to protest that or have the opportunity to voice a concern. I think, I thought it was, you know, very well, I think for us to say that, no, we can never do that again, or make a policy like that, saying, okay, they're going to be punished because they want to exercise that right, I think that's a...
And you said they had to be, and I'm not, I wasn't arguing the merit of this particular protest or anything. I'm saying that there's a lot of social issues out there, and we should, we can continue to look at each one as they come up, or we can have, and we can have a policy to address student protest.
I was driving today, KMOX, they had some analysis and a talk show on this very thing, and people were going back and forth about, you know, rights to protest, but, you know, controlling that at some degree, to some degree. And they brought up things like, if you, you can do that, but you will vote pro. And some of these, some of these, some of these people that were speaking, you know, some of these things were in place, and people didn't know that if they protested, it would be allowed to vote pro, or something like that. They were proing and coning, and you had two sides to all of that, but it was a kind of a lively discussion on the radio there. When...
Greg, you had another comment? Well, so, the first thing is, I mean, we can absolutely tell them no. I mean, there's repercussions, but we could say, no, you're not protesting during the school. In this particular situation, we had a group that came, and I think in the appropriate way, and said they would like to participate in this particular event. And so, we tried to find the best way to handle it that allow them to do this, but also, part of our conversation was, to say it, we didn't want to talk about guns, because that is a hot topic. So, we asked the group that, you know, if you want to honor the kids, honor the kids, and that's, that's what they did. And I think I sent you an email, kind of a description of what happened. And it was, it was, they read the names of the seventeen victims, and then after seventeen minutes, a student said, okay, thanks everybody, and they went inside. And then also, I asked the teachers if they felt comfortable to use that time, when the kids were out of class, as a teachable moment, to talk about what, you know, what rights you have and what rights you don't have. And so, you know, democracy is a very tough thing, it's not easy. And so, I will, I will give you an example, as the group was walking down the hall to go outside, a truck drove down Tank Road that had an American flag and a Rebel flag on it, and one of the kids got upset. And again, I'm not taking sides, I said, hold on a minute. They have the right to do that just as much as you have the right to do this? And I think that's an important lesson. So, you know, a group of students comes to us and says, you know, we want to, we want to protest, I don't know, Pink Bunny Rapids or something. Well, we're not going to allow that, but this, this was different. And I agree wholeheartedly that, I mean, there's been five kids out there. My, the social worker myself stood off the side, they handled everything. We didn't say a word, and, I mean, it was, it was, it was a very nice moment. I had some adults that were observing said how impressed they were with how the kids handled themselves. So, in the twenty-six years I've been there, this, been here, this is the first time we've ever had any kind of event like this. So, I don't think we're going to have these things very often. So, I don't know how you would write the policy. I'm sure somebody has it, but I was not interested in, I don't know, applying discipline for students. I just, I felt like they had the right to do this, they did it the right way.
And I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying it's an option.
Oh, absolutely. I did not feel like that I wanted to do that, so...
Mike, yeah, I was just going to say, it felt to me like, because we were in the process, because we, the correspondence, that it was handled correctly all the way across the board. So, the kids did the right thing, they went to administration, asked permission. Permission was granted, they handled themselves in a very professional manner out. When they did the protest, they went back in, we had kids inside the school, they learned things. It was more of a teaching moment, probably, than if they had sat the seventeen minutes in class, to be honest. That was huge, and if you threw that in, what we're talking about on Tank Road, you even add more to the conversation. Because you have to understand that yours is not the only opinion, and everybody has a right to do it. But I think based on what's going on in your country, based on what happened, I don't see a thing wrong with it, and I certainly, given the track history of the school, I wouldn't try to write a policy for this, if it gets to be a problem, we can always deal with it. But I wouldn't jump to that personally.
That was just an add, after the way you explained it, that sounds very reasonable to me. And all I was doing was relating the conversation on the radio.
Sure.
You know, not to say, yeah, let's hop on that endway, but the way you explained that...
And then, sorry to dominate the conversation, but, so, we have a very large group of gun enthusiasts, hunters, whatever you want to call them, and great kids, and so we had a lot of kids show up with their, you know, guns on their shirt, NRA, whatever it is. And so, I actually had some decent conversations at lunch with those kids. And it, I mean, I was, I was very pleasantly surprised at how engaged they were in the conversation. And, you know, and me trying to explain to them a little bit of why that activity or that event was necessary, but then also to respect them, you know, a kid, I guess they were worried that we were going to get mad, they had gun shirts on. I said, well, we don't have a policy that you can't wear a shirt that says gun. Now, it said it has tobacco, it has alcohol, or it has drugs or curse words, you can't wear that. But you have the right to wear that. And so, it was a very nice conversation with just a small group. So, I, I think there were, at least my understanding from the teachers, there were other conversations just like that. And I, I'm pretty proud of the kids and how they handled this, I thought they handled it very well.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to Ivan D.
This is the athletic training service that we use from ATI, the local athletic training. And Brett Kisserow has been our trainer for quite a long time, the contract is up. They would like to enter into a new two-year contract. The cost of the contract is the same as it has been the last two years. I would like to continue that relationship. Brett has a very good relationship with our coaches and our student athletes, and I think it's worthwhile to stay with them and to keep this relationship moving forward. Any questions or comments on that?
If there's a student with a master and stuff, he goes through a background check and everything, like, like the school employee board or everything, I haven't seen it in the contract, does that happen?
I honestly don't know the answer to that.
I would like to know the answer to that.
Sure.
Got it, because you want to know what's going on.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah. And if, if we haven't, then we'll have them do the same exact thing.
I'll make the motion, have the motion moved to Cali.
I'd like to find that he has a valid background check. I'll prove it.
Motion may approve.
As long as there's a...
Background check.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, motion must be out.
Start it.
Of course, nothing, just all, no, we need to...
A roll call of that for both those rooms. Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Photography Services Renewal, we've been using Live Touch for, I don't know, five, six, seven years, something like that. We just finished a three-year contract with them. The school district actually does not pay anything towards this contract. Live Touch makes all their money off of student photographs, teen photographs for athletics. They do come to athletic events, take pictures, they provide it to the yearbook staff, and that is where we get a lot of our pictures in the yearbook from the athletics. I would like to continue using them. We've had, I believe, a very positive experience with them, so I'd like to move forward and renew that three-year contract. Any questions or comments on this?
I'll throw one out on their, there's several people that aren't satisfied with their, their services and particularly their creativity. I would challenge you to look into the actual photos that are being used for the yearbook and see where they come from. There's some, you can talk to Ms. Minor if you, if you like, on that. I know the school receives quite a kickback from them, I can understand the motivation for continuing to use their services, but at least in my house, I haven't been very, very happy. Talked with other parents, haven't been very happy.
So, what specifically?
There's no creativity, the pictures aren't that good. You can go into the, into the cafeteria and look at the sports pictures.
They don't take those, a parent takes those.
A parent takes those?
Yeah.
All right. Well, we receive, I've got a free sport athlete, and I get pictures from Centone each time, and we go to other schools and we, we see, see photos on the, on the walls and different things. I haven't been happy with the, so, and it, and it might be a great compliment, I just think that they, it could be police a little bit more, and I challenge you to talk with Ms. Minor, talk with the athletic department, and see exactly what, what they're doing for us.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion at this time?
I don't think we should, we should, redo the commentary.
Okay, motion, Mr. Gao? Brett's second?
Second.
So, one is for the girl. Roll call on that?
Yes.
Yep, the roll call will start with Ms. Moore.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Name. Motion carries. I'm out. This is our annual membership to the IHSA. IHSA is the sports organization and... IHSA is the sports organization and other club organizations that holds events after season events. And we need to have yearly membership. And I'm asking for us to approve our yearly membership with the IHSA for next year.
Questions or comments on that?
Say, I move.
So, move. Ms. Miller, send on Ms. Miller. All those who favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Ivan G.
Ms. Crunk has the first reading for the handbook, the different changes that they are recommending.
Okay. Handbook committee members this year, our board member was Mrs. Miller. Staff members were Mrs. Meyer, Mr. Alt, and Mr. Place. Our parents were Julie Range and Sonya Smith. Our students, sophomore Jackson Dirks, junior Molly Wolf, and senior Colleen Paffrell. And then, there was myself. For those of you that are new to the board, what we do is we get together as a committee. Kids bring their stuff, parents bring their stuff, board members bring their stuff. And we kind of brainstorm on what we want to propose for the handbook for next year. So, I sent an email to everyone. And how it works is I put the actual wording that's actually in the handbook. And then, below that, I make changes, any wording that we can be made. Okay, some of them are minor, some of them are just changing dates and so forth. Some of the language is changed. So, it's important for us to kind of go over them and let you discuss and kind of tell you the rationale behind some of those changes. But remember, these are proposed changes. And you guys, it's up to you as a board to decide whether or not you accept those changes or not. So, if you open up the email I sent you, you'll have our first recommendation. The handbook committee would like to see the early dismissal bell schedule put in the handbook. Recommendation number two, you guys just approved this tonight. To change that date from October the fifteenth to August the first. Recommendation number three, this was actually on page thirty-eight in the handbook. And Ms. Meyer thought it needed to fall under Student Services. You know, I agree with her. I think this is a good place for it. And we've actually renamed the other area on page thirty-eight, which I'm going to talk about here just a little bit. Recommendation number four, basically, we just, you know, I took out the school social workers located in the main office, because that's no longer the case. So, a lot of it just cleaning things up a little bit. Recommendation number five, the cafeteria. Basically, I changed the date. And then, this is already a current practice, but I wanted to put it in there. Students are not allowed to leave cafeteria during lunch. Recommendation number six, door locking system. We just cleaned up the language. It's current practice. But we just wanted to add in there that, you know, they're going to have to be identified before they enter the school doors. Detention. Okay. This is kind of a big change. This was recommended by handbook committee. Detentions right now are served before school and after school for thirty minutes. We have a teacher signs up for that at the beginning of the year. I send out the schedule, and that's how it works. A lot of the students and the faculty felt like in the handbook committee that the detention before school and after school wasn't really punishment enough, that the kids just took it very lightly, didn't take it very serious. And they thought if they did lunch detention, then obviously, they don't want to be separated from their friends during lunch. And so, they might take it more seriously. It might help with more of the discipline issues that we have going on. So, I've attached the teacher survey from Mrs. Place where people responded. She also gave us a detailed list of things, how they would be done. If you go down to the financial outlook, the current plan right now costs a hundred and fifty dollars a week. If a teacher comes in the morning, whether or not a kid shows up, they get paid after school. That's not the case of this contract. They have to stay here longer anyway. But before school, they do get paid, so roughly a hundred and fifty a week. If we go to lunch detentions Monday through Friday, it's two hundred and twenty-five dollars a week. Lunch detention Monday through Thursday is a hundred and eighty dollars. And then, lunch detention Tuesday through Thursday is a hundred and thirty-five. So, just to kind of give you an idea of the cost factor in those changes.
What about a question?
Ask away.
So, how long is their lunch hour?
Thirty minutes. Same thing if they, like, one detention counts for thirty minutes.
I'm just sort of trying to understand how they're going to get their lunch during the...
Well, that's, they would have a sack lunch. And then, I would call in that sack lunch, because I'm the one who hands out, you know, this one. I would call the cafeteria, let them know that I need so many sack lunches. And even the teacher or our aide in the office. Again, this is just, I'm relaying how it's going to work.
I saw all that in there. I just physically, either they're going to get lunch in and do study or do studying that they're required, and then even...
The last of the stuff and everything with Romeo. And then, the lunches will be brought to them. They can either bring their own lunch, or a sack lunch will be delivered. So, they don't have to wait in line or anything like that. It will be brought to them in the classroom.
So, the whole idea of the study hall, our detention is punitive. It's not really to provide them time to study. It's to take away something. So, it just felt like the before and after school was not taken. It was not really a punitive thing. But if we take away their lunch, that's going to be a little more punitive.
The reason they struggle with it is because it also says in this, I read it all this afternoon, but it also says in here that if they don't break their lessons, or whatever it is that they're supposed to be studying on, they can't count the detention. They're going to get out of here. So...
Well, the reason behind that is you don't want them to come there and just sit around and do absolutely nothing. I mean, how long is it going to take them to eat lunch? Ten minutes, I would say, and then they can work on homework. You don't want them in there for twenty minutes doing absolutely nothing. You don't, and that's the same thing for an after school. If a kid comes in there and they're not doing anything, they could be asked to leave. How far has it changed?
The financial outlook you gave us, Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday.
Yeah.
Is this just if we have the need for it this week? We have so many detentions, it's going to be Monday through Friday? It's not like we're setting policy that we're only going to do it Tuesday through Thursday?
Well, yeah, you probably have to decide on that, I feel like. As a board, I think you need to decide.
What are you saying is the need for detentions? Are we having that many that really, this time of the year?
Yeah.
Beginning of the year is not...
Beginning of the year, like, the first three weeks is not bad. But after that, it starts to pick up and it just gets worse.
But if we're not using it, then we're not...
Not using it, they don't get paid.
We're not having this cost.
So, yeah, where you have to pay someone to come in. Yeah, you have to pay someone to come in at seven-thirty regardless if anyone shows up. But at lunchtime, if no one's there, then the teacher's going to have to pay them.
Okay.
Question, we're going to have a part when you talk about the financial part. So, if I'm understanding it correct, if you were to go with the Tuesday through Thursday, you could actually reduce the cost.
Right, that's what I was looking at, too.
And we can do whatever you guys decide, you know? So, that's up to you guys to make those decisions, so...
We could actually start off with the Tuesday through Thursday. I don't know that we necessarily need to say we need to have exactly Tuesday through Thursday. I think it's better to do it on an as-need basis. And then, we can keep track and kind of compare, you know, after a while, we see. And if we feel like we're spending too much money, then we can, you know, reel it back a little bit and say, we're not going to have them this day or that day or whatever. Or, Ms. Crunk can say, well, just in Herona County, can say, we're not going to do them on Wednesday. We're not going to do them on Tuesday, whatever it is, to take away that day.
Yeah, just assign them whatever days you guys allow. And I would assign them all those days. I mean, so, we could have several kids and, you know, one detention. You know, we might have five after school or something, you know? Five before school or whatever the case may be. I don't know what kind of week it is, but we could do whatever you guys decide on that.
So, how many kids are going to be treated?
They handle thirty in class.
We're not going to carry a number that we can go with the Tuesday through Thursday to start with.
Well, I would rather us not put restrictions in the lunches, kind of keep an eye on it as we go forward and see how much we use. I mean, these are if you're using it every day. This is the cost. At the beginning of the year, I mean, we probably don't have detentions more than one or two kids a day tops for the first month or so. And then, they just start, you know, getting a little bit more. Or, if the board wants to say it needs to be Tuesday through Thursday, they can do that.
I'm just thinking the other part of the policy says that they have to do it within three days. I'm thinking there's a...
No, that got marked out. If you go during lunch, that's no void. They would do the lunch detention the next day or whenever it's available. That's for before and after school, so that should be marked out.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that? Do we want to just go by what Brett is saying at first, just kind of see how it goes before we do anything?
Again, this is just the first reading.
That's right.
So, you guys have another opportunity in April.
Right.
Yes.
Yep. Let's go on.
Yeah. Okay, recommendation number eight, student personal belongings in red. You'll see where the changes. We wanted to add purses, drawstring bags, and purses. This comes from the handbook committee. And then, we took out, you know, and then I marked out some of the other things that we didn't need in there. But the big thing about this is going to be the purses. The girls are used to carrying purses. And this is saying that they are not allowed to carry purses anywhere in the classroom. So, that's going to be, that's going to be a good one.
I agree with it. You can't carry a purse into a sporting event or a concert because of safety. So, I know it'll be a big negative with the girls, but I agree with it.
How's the purse any different than a backpack?
That was going to say, that was a concern. A lot of people, they have a purse beside them, Kansas, and keep all their books in there anyway.
Yeah, that's the argument.
And the safety hazard with that is that it's in the floor and blocking aisleways and things like that, not other concerns. But, and for personal items, they were said, it was commented that they could stick it in their Chromebook bag if they had personal items that they don't want out in public.
So... We've gone on the personal items, January first, we had to provide three personal items in all of the bathrooms and locker rooms. So, those are available. So, they just have to send and...
It also, it also tends to be, it's a little bit of a sexist policy to allow purses and not backpacks. So, this way, it's more equal. That's the argument of the guy.
Are you saying that you are allowing backpacks or you're not allowing backpacks?
No, allowing purses, backpacks, or anything. No bags.
No drawstrings, no sports bags.
Chromebook bag, is it?
Yep.
Okay. Let's move on.
Okay. Recommendation number nine, it's about Chromebooks. Mr. Alt brought this to our attention, or it is the Assistant Principal. He wanted to add Director of Technology. And he wants the, basically, the penalty to be a little bit steeper. Right now, it's three strikes, you're out. He wants the referral to come on the second time instead of the third. So, that's basically what that's saying. Now, I've been working on new logs offline. This is something that the students really wanted. So, that way, if they have their handbook at home, they, you know, maybe they don't remember what Mr. Alt told them. They had that in there. I'm not sure if this is the right place for it. We might want to think about putting it somewhere else. But I just stuck it in here because, you know, if it fell under Chromebooks, but we can put it under technology use, I'm not really sure. But they do want that in the handbook. So, that way, they know if they don't have internet at home, they can take, you know, follow these steps and be able to work offline at home. Recommendation number ten, dress code. Okay, this should be interesting. Okay. From the handbook committee, they would like tank tops to be added. A lot of girls get confused about the three-finger rule, the two-finger rule. It's never been a rule, but it's something they've always judged by. Technically, a student should be covered from the shoulders to their mid-thighs. So, obviously, holes in jeans got brought up. It's a very hot topic with our students. A lot of the clothes nowadays have holes in the jeans. They also have material that backs those holes in the jeans. Sometimes they don't. But the kids were very comfortable with saying, as long as you didn't have holes above your mid-thigh. So, I personally think this is going to be really hard to monitor. But again, this is what the handbook wanted, and this is what I'm bringing to you guys to make that decision about.
Any comments on this one?
I'll make a comment.
I figured you would.
I am totally against...
So, you're on the handbook committee, my shirt.
I was on the handbook committee last year. We're not doing school uniforms, kids, which so many schools are. And other schools like Waterloo are so much stricter on their dress code. I am not for any holes in any items. It makes it so much harder on the teacher to decide. The hole is only a half inch or a two inch, or it's this high or that low. Teachers need to be teaching. Our administrators need to be doing other things. I'm worried about that. I'm totally against adding that or taking that out, I think, in my opinion. And that was the first reading, so we can all think about it for the next reading.
Okay.
What did you say on tank tops and pants?
Tank tops aren't allowed. They wanted tank tops added in there, because the girls tend to get confused about that sometimes, about, you know, what's covering the shoulder. So...
I'm weird. Trying to get this objective, so I don't want to confuse people.
Right.
To the people that told us I'm working here for it. Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Recommendation number eleven is about tobacco. All change in there was new language. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of Jules, but it's something that's very popular among teenage students. You know, kids in their, you know, younger twenties, if they have a little bit of a problem with it here at school. So, I wanted to make sure that it was listed in there. Plus, you can put different stuffs in it. It looks like a drive, like you put in your computer. And it has these little pockets, packets, I don't know what you call it, like these little tubes that you then put in. What are they called? They have a name?
Pods.
Pods, my bad, pods. And those pods can have anything. I mean, it could be just sand, or it could have tobacco, have nicotine in it. It could have marijuana in it or THC. That's something that we don't know. So, I wanted to make sure that got included and that it stayed under tobacco. We can't put it under drug paraphernalia, because our lawyer said we'd have to prove that it was THC in there. I don't know how we can prove that, so... Pods. I'll write that down, girls, pods.
Yes, go ahead and move forward.
Okay. Recommendation number twelve, weapons. All it did on that was change new language. Could face expulsion. Ms. Jones said there's a law that you can't state that they'd be expelled for one or two years. So, we have to leave that open to the board, right? Is that correct?
The board has to make that decision.
Yeah, the board has to make that decision. So, we just changed the wording or the language in that just a little bit. Recommendation number thirteen, this is what Mr. Alt wanted added to the handbook. This is just his preference and technology. And that way, the students know what they're responsible for as far as damages or anything like that. And so, now, it's listed in the handbook, so there can't be any questions on that topic. Recommendation number fourteen, athletic eligibility. Mrs. Meyer said it's too hard to calculate the GPA, so it's just better to take that out, because pretty much it says it all when they, when it says, you know, that a student is prohibited from failing more than one class per week. That pretty much takes care of it, she said. She said, you know, we don't pay for us to take the GPA out, because it's too hard to calculate. Okay, recommendation number fifteen, we no longer have quarters. So, we're just removing that from the handbook, which is good, because we need more room. We're only allowed so many pages. So, we're adding stuff, so it's always nice to be able to get rid of something that we no longer need. Recommendation number sixteen, college athletic scholarship requirements. Take that out. It's already listed on page thirty-six under the NCAA and NAIA eligibility warrant. So, that's a good area to kind of clean things up a little bit. Recommendation number seventeen, dual participation. You guys are all aware of this. So, basically, we just put it in the handbook. It did say that we didn't have it, we didn't offer it. So, now, we do, and we just put that language in there. Recommendation number eighteen, if you scroll down to where it says, where it's on AD. On D, it says in football, it should be understood that from the time a guilt is proven or admitted, the student will lose one entire week or seven straight days for activities or at least one game. It is actually two games. It's on a sheet that's listed later on in the handbook about extracurricular code of conduct. So, it is actually two games. So, that's a loophole in the handbook. If someone wanted to push that, they could push it and only, you know, have to sit out one week. Okay, on extracurricular code of conduct, penalty sheet, all we do is change the FFA. Okay, on extracurricular code of conduct penalty sheet, all we do is change the FFA, they are now called the Freeburg FFA chapter, that's a, a nationwide thing, and they wanted to make sure that got changed in the handbook. Recommendation number twenty, admission requirements, um, Mrs. Meyer just wanted to change the language and get rid of the two years from, um, two years of the same foreign language, um, and put the, you know, she wanted to explain to parents that they needed to do a little investigation on their part to make sure that wherever they're wanting to apply for college, that they have everything covered that they need. Recommendation twenty-one, um, classification of students, um, we no longer use it. If you're a first year freshman, you're considered, if you're, it's your first year in school, you're considered a freshman, if you're second year in school, you're considered a sophomore, and so forth.
It, it's not affected, I suppose. This, this was put in when we had the MoChile left behind, uh, and it, it basically disqualified for certain, certain students because they did not have enough credits, and then in essence didn't cover the material they were supposed to cover, so we come against this, so this is what schools were putting in.
Recommendation twenty-two, um, Ms. Meyer gave me a list of things, we have things like this that change every year in the handbook, um, so basically we just put new language in, we're gonna be moving, maybe we'll lie on there to make sure we're getting everything covered, um, pretty much any changes that need to be made, go on task, or anything like that. Recommendation twenty-three, um, early graduation, um, Ms. Meyer said we need to vote on November the first, because students need to end their second semester, um, they're scheduled for their junior year, so it needs to be moved up instead of having it made first. Uh, recommendation number twenty-four, again, that's just changing, um, language and adding the tests in there that we now provide. Recommendation twenty-five, guidance and counseling, this is where we moved, did you remember me, um, telling you earlier we moved guidance and counseling underneath Student Services? So if you can see, I have that marked out, and then we've labeled that new, um, area there, standardized assessment programs, and you can see there's a lot of changes, um, that were made, because now we do the SAT. Uh, recommendation twenty-six, um, basically this is current practice, um, if they wanna be exempt from P E, they go to the Guide, Guidance Counselors' Office, and they get a, a paper from them. Recommendation twenty-seven, um, just a few things changed there, so just new language, different classes offered. Recommendation twenty-eight, um, way to GPA, there were some errors, and then we just put in, um, new language. Recommendation twenty-nine, um, Future Farmers of America, um, I told you guys that they, you know, changed their name, and there's also a new description that they wanted, they felt like better, you know, um, explain what the FFA is all about, and so they made those changes, so it followed kind of underneath the national recommendations. Okay, that's all I have. Mr. Alt, did you get my email to you about, um, you were concerned about the threat? Threats being in the handbook, it's under, uh.
You sent it today?
I put it in that same email, yeah, I sent it today, it's under harassment, and it's also listed under weapons.
Okay, and it specifically, uh, speaks of, of that type of threat?
Mm-hmm, but you can look through it, and again, since this is the first reading, if there's, you know, you think something needs to be added or changed, by all means, email here, come and see me, and we can make those changes.
She's referring to, I, uh, I thought, uh, specific language should be in place, uh, to, to guard against the, the joking comment, uh, in light of, in light of the school shootings, in light of any type of, uh, a threat to the student body or to personnel, that all, all comments will be taken seriously, uh, and I think it should also be influenced or, or emphasized at, uh, at the freshman orientations and, and the different things, and I, I made a comment to her, uh, at the, uh, strategic planning, uh, meeting, I'll take a look at it.
Okay, and then just let me know.
I, I think, uh, as far as the holes go, it would probably be good if the board, um, as a group, gave this correct direction on that. I know there was a couple people said that they don't want, they, they would like that stripped, you know, but I think it's important, instead of coming back with a, uh, a second reading that isn't what the board wants, that if people have, you know, more than just two people have a stronger feeling, maybe like four, then that would give them the direction, so that she can change that and have it ready for the second reading.
Yeah, 'cause I have to have the information in, like, May's when they want everything, so that's why we have the first reading now and the second reading, um, next month.
Any word, thoughts, how do you feel about it?
My thoughts, I don't mind the holes, however, I think reinforcing it or, or, um, covering that, I think that, I think it'd be difficult. So I, I would agree that, that not allowing off the holes is, is probably a good idea.
I'm mixed on that right now, uh, I would like to, I guess, ponder this till, until I come, an answer on it, I'm gonna hold it.
I'm, Dean, I'm coming next too, because I have three daughters, and trying to find clothing without holes is difficult. If you have no other option, you pair jeans, yeah, tears rip, so, sorry, again.
I just have one more.
No, sorry, no public comments this time, sorry.
So I can see why it's, it's so popular right now, but then next year it may not be popular at all, this year it's not gonna be an issue, so.
Mine, when I say that, I don't think we should allow the holes, I think, maybe if we keep going down the path where we keep having, having kind of conversations on it, we'll start having conversations plus two, that's what I think we have, so I'm, I'm not prepared for this. Or you guys could be still more.
Or more, or against it?
I don't, I don't have a. I don't have a problem with holes, uh, I, I'm more concerned about the, the length of shorts and inappropriate. I mean, not covering what it should be covering, but the holes, unless it's right, unless it's showing something it shouldn't show, I don't care if it's on.
The concern though is you have a hole in, in the bag where your pocket rips, that's, I mean, that's probably inappropriate, because that would, a lot of the holes have them up here where your front pockets are, that, that certainly doesn't meet the mid thigh, they, uh, rule, so I think, and then, and then enforcing that and those judgment calls, I think, I, I agree, I think, I hate to have to be the person to be like, eh, I'm not sure, and then have, then it's an argument, and, and then send, then it's referral.
Right.
No holes at all, I think, just makes it easier, and I agree, it's hard to find clothes for a teenage girl that, that's cool and doesn't have holes.
So, we're gonna, your line is?
To, to kind of go back to what I, you know, the whole here is to educate, uh, our students to the best of our ability. Um, that means to have a competent person in front of the classroom, a good curriculum, uh, all the, all the ingredients that go into helping education. And, you know, there are, um, I don't even understand what you're saying. Being a young man wants, I don't know what you're talking about. So, you know, any, anything, anything that could be a distraction to that process, um, and who's to define what that is? Can you get the gist of it, what I'm saying, to, to, to distract from the process of, of the, of the goal of what we're doing here is to educate people to the best of our ability? Might, might sound a little old fashioned, but.
Sorry, I think we'll take the holes out.
I'm sure.
All right, let's move on, or, uh, we need to move to approve the first reading, need a motion.
I'm going to approve first reading of the changes for the two thousand eighteen nineteen student handbook as presented with the change of laws.
Action, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
All right, uh, this is the board policy that I spoke about earlier, that, uh, we needed to change to be in compliance, uh, with the reading office, uh, inspection, and basically all it does is it just says in there that the administration does not have, uh, the right or will not require students to turn over, um, their account passwords for their social media.
Questions, comments on that? Need a motion? It's a move.
I'll second.
Let's move to Ms. Ross, and then Ms. Moore, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, if any board correspondence?
Do not please.
Any items? Do we have a reason to go to closed session?
We do, for personnel, uh, negotiations, lawsuits, real estate.
Okay, we have a motion to go to closed session. Motion was forgotten. Second by Oscar Reynolds, we gotta raise the hand first, well, we'll start with you, Ms. Ross.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, we will not move to closed session, thank you everyone for coming to see.